Okay, good morning, everybody. Number one, we're gonna have a public hearing for appointment of consult services with contract fees who expect to save $100,000. No vote required on that. I guess the HR has the lead on this one, right? Oh, I'm sorry, what's the water? I'm sorry, the water department. So Judy, are you prepared for this public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. And likewise for number two, another public hearing.
Chairman, this is Commissioner Cupid.
Sure, go ahead.
Yes. In this item, the top refers to District 3. However, the content of the agenda item refers to four subdivisions in South Cobb County.
Are you on number two?
I'm on number one.
We'll get that corrected.
Okay.
Number one is District 3.
Yes.
Geraldine Lamp lighter and Kenridge are all in my district.
Okay, just in the content-
It's number two that's your district, I think.
Just in the content of number one, it refers to four subdivisions and it says slash areas of South Cobb County?
You're correct, that, yeah, we'll get that corrected. Sorry, I missed that.
Okay.
Now, I was just looking at the map and those three are... Thanks for catching that, I didn't see that part. Okay.
Okay, any other commissioners have any comments on one or two? Hearing none, let's go to the consent agenda and I'll start with Commissioner Cupid. Let's do four through 11.
Yeah, questions on four here, are you all ready?
Okay, no questions, all right. Commissioner Burrow?
No, sir.
Commissioner Rod?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
So, let's go on to DOT Commissioner Gamble, I'll stay with you, question, uh, did items 12 through 17, do you have any questions?
Questions?
Commissioner Gamble, yes?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Rod?
Um, mine's only a statement on number two. And I've had that conversation with Erica and DOT before that we know when we look at buses, we gotta stop looking at just big buses and start looking at some different sized buses. Cause one of the grant items, number 12 is for a bus replacement. That's all I have.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
I don't have anything, sir.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, Erica, for number 14, I know that I'm meeting with your team today. Just to make an update on where we are with the transit stops. As I know this grant money can be utilized for buses and related equipment.
So, on the... I'm sorry, for what?
This is the item number 14, just to get a status update on where we are with bus stops.
Okay.
Yes. And you don't have to do it now, I will speak with you today as a team. When I saw that this money could go towards related equipment, it made me think that undertaking that we had already been discussing.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid, we'll stay with you for items 18 through 20.
Okay, very well, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't hear, do you have any questions?
I said there, give me, I'm sorry, I was still looking from that DOT item.
Okay, all right, I'll just hold off.
Okay, no problem. Chairman, with number, I just have a question with respect to number 20.
Okay.
Statement. The general fund county match portion for the senior service funding that we are going to receive from the Atlanta Regional Commission. Will this be able to come for the care funding? Cause it's in background that the shift in funding for this allotment is in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Or is the agency just willing to absorb that?
Jatton, can you hear Commissioner Cupid's question?
Yes, um, also it responded to Bill Volkman, so I wanted to make sure we understand that this was, um, so the funding that's coming in, we had a shift because of COVID-19, but they also increased our Title III B funding, which increased our match. So, I'm really, that's, maybe Bill might need to weigh in on that, but that's where this came. And I think Commissioner Gamble also had the same question.
It's good to see you, Jatton, too. Um, yes, Bill, if you can help us understand the county match portion for that?
Yes, Commissioner, we're looking into that right now to see if that can be recovered, but I think for now, we're gonna move forward with the general fund picking up that one. And if it can be covered, we will definitely include it.
Okay, great. It's good to see us being able to leverage, you know, a thousand dollars to be able to get that kind of term to support our seniors here.
One thousand.
Should be one million.
Oh, is it one million or one thousand?
It's one thousand, it's an increase.
Yeah, it's one thousand, Bill.
Yeah.
All right, sorry. That's a thousand. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anything to try, Commissioner Cupid?
No, no, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
No, sir.
Hey, Commissioner Rod?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
Commissioner Gamble, I'll stay with you for, um, 21 and 22, any questions on that?
No questions.
Hey, Commissioner Rod?
Questions?
21 or 22?
For me.
You good?
He's good, Chairman.
He's good, all right, see him, all right, Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
Commissioner Cupid?
No questions.
All right, so I'll stay with you, Commissioner Cupid, for questions. About 24 and 25.
No questions.
All right.
23, what about 23?
Okay, Commissioner Cupid, I'm sorry, 23, 24, and 25, how's that? Okay.
Questions?
Commissioner Burrow?
Sorry, so hold on, sir, yes, 24.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill, you may be able to help me understand this agenda item when it refers to excess dollars?
Yes, ma'am, this is dollars in excess of the debt service payment. So, what we have is, we entered into agreement for maintenance a few years ago, so that's what these dollars were being used for.
Okay.
For the district itself.
Okay, just when the district was put together, it contemplated expending funds in multiple categories beyond debt service.
That's correct.
When I see that term excess, it made it seem as if it was even above and beyond, and I thought, you know.
No, ma'am, just-
This activity was already contemplated, so.
Yeah, just excess above and beyond debt service requirements.
Yes, it's clear to me, it just might not be clear to someone else reading this, that this is not just extra money just hanging out there. This is fund that had been contemplated, excuse me, for activity that had been contemplated, willing for special services to be put together.
And if you need any changes to it, let us know, we can, we can do whatever you'd like.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. No additional questions, Chairman?
Commissioner Burrow, any questions on 23, 24, 25?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Rod?
Uh, no questions.
Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
All right, I'll stay with you for 26, 27, 28, and 29.
I do have questions on number 27, but I've sent those to Bill Volkman, so, Bill, if you can get those answered for me before tomorrow, I would appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just wanna make sure you all got the revised 10s on the revised agenda, my 28, we good on that?
I received the revised, yes.
Good, all right. Commissioner Rod?
I'm good, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
Commissioner Cupid?
Okay.
Okay, let's, I'll stay with Commissioner Cupid for 30 through 33.
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
No questions.
Commissioner Gamble?
Um, yes, I do.
Good.
Number 33. I had worked with Kimberly and asked her for additional information and, um, one of the things she sent me was the original request that the nonprofits had submitted to her. Them was for distribution and I know when the board approved this, this was supposed to be specifically for food. But if you look at how, how many of these nonprofits filled out their application, it was more for distribution. It wasn't for the purchase of food. So, while I understand we're only going to be allocating, you know, percentages of what they can get for reimbursements based on receipts for food, in there, a lot of them are saying it's for distribution and storage. How are we going to allocate funds for distribution and storage?
Kimberly, can you jump in on that one for me?
And, and the reason why I'm bringing this up is because in the MOU, it was very clear that we were only going to do reimbursements for food needs.
Commissioner, so, this is Kimberly, hi, everyone. So, the agenda item had food, food distribution and food storage. Those three items were eligible items in the agenda item and also the application. So, applicants had a choice to choose between those three categories. They're all food related, but they did have a choice to choose between all of the three. And that was in the MOU and in the agenda item, and it was also on the application.
Right, and I understand that, but if you go back and read the MOU, and pick it up, it specifically says that grants will be based on the amount of food distributed for the month of April as a percentage of the applicants. And then it goes back on to say that it's submitted through receipts. How are, how are they going to get reimbursed? Be reimbursed for, you know, distribution and storage when you can't use a receipt for that?
Well, that sentence was relating to paring down the money as far as the ask. So, that was, that's the only thing that was related to, if they, if the ask was over one million, that was kind of the method of how we pared it down to a million dollars. But that does not mean that they had to submit receipts with their application. Once they go out and they buy food, or they have, they have distributed that food, or they have some food storage receipts, then they will submit that to our office and then they will get reimbursed based on those receipts. So, but the first step is to submit their application and ask for what they need, but we kind of assume that ask would be more than what we had.
Right, but I guess how, how are we going to be able to, um, you know, cause again, a food receipt is a solid, you know, we know they spent this much money on food. Isn't the other categories kind of subjective?
Oh, no, no, we have, let me pull up the application and I can kind of go over the other categories on the application.
Because the whole purpose of this million dollars was supposed to be just for food. So, that's why when I was looking at the request, the question, the request was just for distribution, not necessarily for the purchase of food, which was the original intent.
The MOU expressly states that one million is to support the critical in food procurement, storage, and distribution. Words are stated in the MOU.
Okay, um, let me just go over some of the items. For food, food distribution, it includes cost, served meals, cost of transporting the food to the site, or paper products, or a daily per diem if they're serving the meal. So, they would have receipts of all of that, all of those, and then I'm thinking for the served meals, it would be a spreadsheet that we'd have them present to us. Under food procurement, food boxes, grocery orders, restaurant vouchers, food banks, food purchased at food banks, vouchers, or transportation costs. And then under food storage, we set a $300 per item maximum, pots, pans, toasters, things to, um, have them produce the food utensils, paper products, and any item essential to the preparation of food or shelving. That was in the application of the items that, and we would need receipts for all of that.
Okay, so, in the, the distribution of the meals, um, is that, I mean, are they, so is one organization going to be refunded if they take meals and say, give it to a church that then goes and distributes the food? Or is that money gonna get credited towards the church?
No, if they don't have a receipt, they can't get anything. So, if they don't have documentation of providing a service, then they can't get anything. So, them giving it to the church wouldn't, wouldn't qualify as them spending money.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble, any other questions on 30 through 33?
No, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Rod?
Questions?
Hey, Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
Commissioner Cupid?
I'm glad to see all of the effort that has gone into providing food so that we can be able to use there those to have challenges with, uh, food and response to COVID-19. Thank you, Kimberly, I know you had to do a lot of work in a short amount of time, but certainly is for a significant cause to work with the many partners that have been out in the community and still continue to be out in the community, helping people with food insecurity.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Cupid. And I'll stay with you for 34, 35, and 36.
Yes, no questions.
Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
Commissioner Rod?
No questions.
And Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
Wanted to, just to start with 37 through 39, Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
Should we do 37 through what? 39?
Nine.
Yeah, no questions.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
And Commissioner Cupid?
No questions.
All right, so I'm gonna stay with you with Commissioner, uh, number 40, Commissioner Cupid, I just wanna make one thing here is that. Did you know that number 40 was not a county manager's initiative, mine, I asked, I started to put that together in the agenda board. So, I just wanna make sure we understand here that this is something based, obviously, on discussions we heard last week. And both 40 and 41 are in response to discussions in those forums. So, that, I'll say, let's just start with 40, Commissioner Cupid?
Yeah, um, the first time that I saw this document was an email that Jackie McMorris sent to the board, and I think this stemmed from the patient that we had last week Tuesday. Before I really digest the impact of this document, I've started to see a lot of revisions go back and forth from board members. And so, before I have any additional comment, I would like to hear from board members on why they think this document should be modified, and then I'd like to weigh in with additional comments.
Okay, so, look, Commissioner Burrow, sorry.
Okay, um, we did receive an email from the county manager, and, um, before I could respond, we started getting a lot of emails on the item that's in our book for vote today. Some conversations went back and forth after that with, um, suggestions of including some of the programs that we are currently doing and improving upon those or expanding upon those, kind of to show, um, what we have been doing and, and what we commit to do or committed to do. So, I sent an email agreeing to including that portion of the, um, resolution to Commissioner Gamble's request. And, um, we also received an email from the county manager agreeing to that, and, um, so, I'm, we got another, um, email this morning that includes that, so, that's, that's my, um, and we also had a video from the police that was really very moving, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from constituents on, on that as well. I, I think, I don't see why it hurts to put some of the things that we're doing in there. Um, there's always room for improvement. We are committed to improving and expanding as we can and working with the community.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Rod?
Chairman, I read all, during the week, all the different email exchanges and everything else, and, um, and have read the version that we were sent this morning, which is the version that I support.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Yes, I did pretty much collect the comments that I had received over email as this was supposed to be a board discussion between us on the original draft, so I pretty much, um, and as Dr. McMorris had sent out in an email, because of the different opinions, staff was gonna step down. So, in order to ensure that this resolution got put forth, I kind of took it upon myself to combine all the comments that I was receiving and reformulated the document and then shared it this morning.
And I just wanna, I just wanna thank all the board members for, I come back, Commissioner Cupid, I want to thank all the board members for this exchange. I think that given the circumstances we're in right now with COVID-19 and door shelters in place still for many of us, this is a, um, you know, it wasn't the smoothest way to do business, but that's, that's the world we're living in right now. This is all very difficult to get together like we used to in the old days. So, I just, the fact that we are all open enough and putting those emails out there and trying to keep this discussion among us, I realize that as soon as you type something and send it, it becomes a matter of public record, but that's where we live in here, and I think that's also, that's so. But because it is a matter of public record, I think that drives us to make sure that what we say is something that we really believe in or what we're trying to do in the best interest of the county. So, now, I'll turn the, I'll come back, Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I heard that there has been a resolution provided to commissioners this morning. At what time is this provided to commissioners?
Uh, that's Dr. McMorris for that one.
On this particular agenda item, this resolution came to me with these changes that you all are referring to now that Commissioner Gamble helped to craft. I got it this morning, and I guess it was probably eight-ish, between eight and 8:15. And so, that was the one that I understand you all have been communicating via email based on the feedback that you have been receiving from your constituents or with whom you have been speaking. So, I sent it out this morning to you because that's the first time I had seen it in this row, it's from-
I just wanted to share, I have an email at 8:44 from Commissioner Gamble with the proposed resolution. Is this the resolution that Commissioner Burrow and Commissioner are stating that they support?
It is from me.
Yes. Okay. I have received this proposal 16 minutes prior to this meeting, and I will share this publicly for public consumption. From my review of this document, I will not support it. And I think it will be a very strong statement to see that the only African-American on this floor is probably at least the best subject matter expert on this board to speak to the impacts of racism, it's not insupportable. I will share a few reasons why I'm not in support of it, and again, you can do as you would like, but I want you to know that for me to get this 16 minutes prior to our meeting is an issue. For me to see persons who have purposefully chosen not to participate in dialogue with respect to race and then make comments that they don't perceive that this exists and all that's going on is out, is with respect to one incident, to see that individual- that's going on is out, is with respect to one incident, to see that individual take the lead on this document in such a manner of which even my feedback to the board has not been considered or responded to is a high disappointment. But I will share this. The board has opportunity to make a very direct statement with respect to racism. This document reflects the national concern right now about the impacts of racism. The national events that are occurring have had impetus from the death of George Floyd, which was at the hands of a police officer. However, there have been multiple events leading up to that for which many people say they will not continue to allow this to occur and to not stand up and speak boldly with respect to this in our communities. And a lot of times, when there are significant policy matters, they are best promulgated from the people at the top. That in Cobb County is us. And the people at the top, the people on this board commissioners, have opportunity to make a very clear concise statement about our views condemning racism. To, to add in language that then narrows this down to the police department and speaks about their programming undermines the broad impact of racism in every facet of life. It undermines even practices within our own organization that may not necessarily have an intent of being racist on its face, but you can certainly see the outcome of activity results in disparity to, to communities of color, particularly to black communities. So it bothers me to see this conversation or this communication have to put forward the police department. For one, as Commissioner Burrow stated, the police department has already put out a statement with respect to racism in that video that they created, which is powerful. We have opportunity as a board to make a statement for our entire organization. So I think that is a, is a conflict for me. Then to put forward specific programs that the police have in place. It's funny because when we put forward PAL, I never thought PAL was a program to address race, but we need to put that in a document. When we had the police explore program, I never thought that was a program to address race, but it's in this document, so clearly that, clearly it must be because that's what's implied. We had a faith forum, I never knew the faith forum was to address race, but when you put those specific programs in this resolution, that is what you are implying. That's a problem for me. If we're going to be so bold to put that in on the back end of a resolution, let's have those upfront conversations about how race was a factor when these programs were put in place, because that certainly was not communicated with me. Nor for all the participants that come into this program, I think they should know that that's the basis or one of the premises or assumptions for why these programs exist. If it is not, I don't think it belongs in this document. I have not read all the language because within sixteen minutes, we've been sitting here trying to get ready technically to address the many items in this agenda book. But I will share this publicly, I will go for it, and I could tell you right now, if what I've seen from Commissioner Gambrell's proposal reflects what I've seen from modifications made over this past week, my comments made tomorrow will be stronger than the ones I have today. And I will, and I will not stand alone in my view. All of you have received a lot of communication from constituency across this county, asking you to support this original document. So I know I will not stand alone in my perspective. And all I'm asking for you is for one, at least, to be respectful of my perspective on this board when it comes to a weighty matter such as this of which I feel, which I know. I have seen the impacts of not just broadly in Cobb County, not just in my own experience in life, but even in dealings on this floor. Well, those are my comments, Chairman.
Commissioner Cupid, if, if there have been revisions to the agenda, to the resolution as proposed in the agenda book, would you have supported that one?
Yes, Chairman, I would, except I think I've read every case that I could prior to today. I have read communication from people in support, I've read communication of people who are not in support, and there are people who are not in support for multiple reasons. There are people who are not in support because they feel like the board should be acting on things and providing how they, what they will do, not just their opinion. But I believe this document as it is, is a start. But I also heard of, or a very lengthy email from someone who thought this was my resolution, who stated that they were concerned because of a clause, which is, let me count here, one, two, three, four. It's the last whereas clause. The last whereas clause says, "In order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens and visitors, the board wishes to condemn racism, bigotry, hate, and violence, which can no longer be tolerated in Georgia and particularly Cobb County." There were expressed concerns with the two words "no longer" as if Georgia and Cobb County has tolerated it. I think it may be, I, I think there are some that say from what they've experienced, that the state of Georgia and Cobb County has tolerated these things. But there are also many that believe that this is an admission of activity of which they do not believe to be true. If somebody wanted to strike the word "no longer" and say, "The board wishes to condemn racism, bigotry, hate, and violence, which cannot be tolerated in Georgia and particularly Cobb County," that's not to imply something that could be divisive to our community, that could give us a forward-looking view, I would support that, because to me the "no longer" part of this is a great debate. And it leads into the various opinions that I've seen shared in the community and on this board with this resolution. I think this is a very strong document. It no longer was changed to can not, to not mean. And that would be the only change that, that, or one of the stronger changes that I can make a concession on, so as to not be hung up in, in having to have a long conversation of pointing to specific experiences that almost any African American in Cobb probably can do. But again, can do with respect to, I, I'm not going to, I'm going to stop there. That's, I can't, I can't, I can't.
Okay, I understand. All right.
Chairman, if I may respond?
Okay, that's what this meeting is all about.
Thank you. Um, we received a document that was supposed to be a working document for the Board of Commissioners to, works amongst the five of us to come up to an agreement on the resolution. We're talking about racism, but in order to truly end racism, we need to be able to trust each other, and that trust needs to belong on this board. When a document is sent, and it is supposed to be a working document amongst the board, there needs to be a level of trust that it's going to stay amongst the board until we come up with a final document. That was clearly not shown here in getting to this, this document. So yes, I waited to send this document out at eight forty-four because I knew that I could not trust its staying amongst the five board members. So again, to end racism, we need to start a level of trust, and the trust starts here on this board.
How would I to respond? There has never been a requirement on this board that any document that we consider in contemplation of an agenda item were made amongst the five. There has never been such a view, but clearly one is sensitive to having their views considered on a matter which has impact to a very broad constituency. And to put this forward fourteen minutes before a board meeting without all commissioners and without the public dismisses me and it dismisses others in our community. So I think that is the larger issue. My support for you, Commissioner Gambrell, on this board when no one has over and over and over again. So if you believe that I have not had a track record of, of establishing a framework of trust, then there's really nothing more that I could do to establish that. This document, it is not for the sole black commissioner on this board to bear the weight of the offense on her own. I wanted the community to see the stress level I had to deal with and seeing the boldness of these modifications, because I did not want to have to bear that on my own, and I shouldn't have to. I stand by what I did, and I stand by my decision of not supporting that resolution that you have proposed, which essentially mimics the communication that you are not happy that I sent to the public.
Okay, let me just, let me just jump in here, I just got to agree to disagree for, for the moment, but I think that there's also, if there's anyone, any finger pointing to be done here, all right, I'll, I'll accept it, I'll be very, I can with you, Commissioner Cupid and to the board, that this agenda item and the, and the new forty alpha on the hate crime bill wasn't a direct response to the forum that Commissioner Cupid organized last week. And one of the takeaways that I saw from that was that the, the community, at least expressed through the large participation in that forum, you know, expected some kind of a statement from the board with regard to racism and the hate crime bill. The, the, the challenge is that we only had a week to do that, and in that week, because of the nature of how we're doing business together, there was going to be a lot of, you know, back and forth where we're, you know, emails going back and forth between each other, we'd miss it, we'd be missing each other, and I think that's what we're seeing now, or part of it anyhow, not all of it, I, I understand what, what both commissioners are saying here. So because of the timeframe involved on a very important issue, yes, we probably would have needed more time to discuss this, but I believe also that the public wasn't willing to wait another two weeks, in this case, three weeks from the time the Commissioner Cupid's forum, for us to come out and address a very weight issue right now. So I just ask all of us to be, you know, I understand we're going to disagree here on a lot of these things here, and I'm not sure how the vote's going to come out, although I've heard how Commissioner Cupid says he's going to vote over the revision. But I, again, this is the nature of where we are right now, and I just didn't believe that we could wait until the end of June to discuss something that clearly by seeing the magnitude of the protest, of the demonstrations in the county over the last ten days, is that they expected this board to say something. Now, what we're going to say, may we not, may not be agree on the message and commonality, but I, I strongly believe that the community right now is looking for this board for leadership, and what this, what this statement's going to look like will come out tomorrow in a very open forum where everyone will be involved. So I agree in the nature of the concept that we might have needed more time to discuss this, but the reality is, is that we just didn't have that time. So this is going to be real, you know, the easy expression, this is real sausage making in the political arena, which leads us into the next agenda item on the hate crime bill. I, I, believe it or not, last week after the forum, I, I talked to commissioners, and I, there wasn't any consensus about the hate crime bill, but I strongly believe that we needed to say something about the hate crime bill in some format. And what I heard from the commissioners was that four twenty-six had, they had a lot of issues with the nature of four twenty-six. So what I was trying to do is, again, find common ground, like we need to have a statement that we need to, we need to have a hate crime bill, all right, passed by the legislature, but I wanted to ensure that the people understood that the process to do that was not just go directly to the state legislature and bypass our delegation, but to include them in this resolution to make sure that the string, the thread of, of endorsement for this comes from the board, through the delegation, into, into the legislature. That's, so that's my thought pattern here. So that, I'm just going, we've all, again, I make an apology to the commissioners, to all the commissioners, because of the nature of trying to get the wording down on this hate crime bill, and it was worked through the weekend, I, I couldn't get the wording in that I thought was appropriate until this morning. But, you know, it is what it is, and that's, you've all, you know, we'll have a copy of that, so I'll start with Commissioner Gambrell on that, on my, I'll be making a motion tomorrow that we add this hate crime resolution to the agenda. So I'll start with Commissioner Gambrell and her comments.
Thank you, Chairman, and I've just had an opportunity to read it again. There's one thing in the, therefore be it resolved, it says the Cobb delegation to continue to work closely with, it should be the state instead of to state.
Okay.
So it's just a typo there.
Thank you.
But otherwise, that's my only comments as of reading it for now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Roddick?
Good with your proposal, as we discussed.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
I'm good with it as written.
Commissioner Cupid?
I have not seen it this morning, Chairman.
Okay, all right. Well, basically, just, there's a couple whereas's, but the, the recommendation is, is that the board,
May you please read it verbatim if it's just a couple?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
All right. Whereas the board commissioners is expressing post to racism, bigotry, hate, and violence in the form, and whereas a crime of hate is any criminal crime committed to the victim's actual or perceived race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, mental disability or physical disability, and whereas Cobb County government is committed to servicing the community in the most effective and efficient manner while continuing to build and reinforce the need for community partnership and trust. Therefore be it resolved that the Cobb County Board of Commissioners encourages the Cobb delegation to continue to work closely with the state legislature in adopting a hate crime bill that ensures equal protection and equal justice for all, and be it further resolved that a Cobb this resolution be delivered to each member of the top delegation and be available for distribution in the public and to the press.
Okay. Yes, I, I'm listening to that, I can be supportive of it, I do see an email here at eight thirty-six from Jackie McMorris before our nine o'clock meeting. Yes, again, I will read it, I think it sounds supportable, I think that's where a lot of the, the voices, the voices. the voices lay that are large when we were speaking last Tuesday in support of this. So right now on its face, I can, again, I need to go back and look at the document in its entirety before I can affirm.
Okay, thank you. All right, see if I can get back on track here. We're on number forty-one, I believe. Okay, so I'm going to stay, I'm going to stay with you, Commissioner Cupid, for forty-one through forty-five.
Happy to see the, I'm trying to turn my page to them. Happy to see the Mableton Parkway project continue to move forth and building a trail on one side, a sidewalk on the other side of Mableton Parkway between Factory Shoals and Discovery Boulevard.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cupid. Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, my book on zero five says number, item number fourteen, and I think it should be twenty-one. It should be. Mableton Parkway improvements, correct? I think it's just the numbers are transposed, but we need to correct that. And then forty-two is, is sidewalks in District Three. Thank you, Erica. Well, savings to that project. And also forty-three, signalization savings. I don't have any questions, just those comments.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Roddick?
No questions.
The remainder of the agenda.
Okay, good. Commissioner, anything else on forty-six?
Yeah, the other thing I want to mention on forty-six, so the board remembers, and when they, this is not the final agenda item that we will see on this. The Unified Court Management System is a very expensive project and it's involved. And I just wanted to highlight, because when I talked to Sharon about it, I just want to make sure everybody realizes that there will be more coming back. It's a huge undertaking. It is something that the board's discussed in the past and it has been approved. So I just don't want anybody to be surprised when the rest of it comes back.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Cupid?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, we're good. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.